I think it's time to call the meeting of the Town Hall of Fame's planning board. Meeting for Thursday, September 18th, 2025. Wow, when did it get to be the 18th of September? I have to announce that the planning board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube and Community Access Television. We are located in the Selectment's Meeting Room at Town Hall 499 Plymouth Street here in Halifax, of course. Present tonight for the board is Bruce Sylvester on Zoom. You can see his face right there. To my left is Amy Trup, myself, Tom Millius, Bert Gainer, and Jamie Walsh. I guess the first order of business is to look at the agenda.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Because we have a Zoom participant, we need to do a roll call vote. I'll start with Bruce.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Myself, Tom? Yes. Amy?
Yes.
Unanimous. First order of business is a continuation of PSPR 253, 539 Plymouth Street Site Plan Review. Is anyone here for that? No? Okay.
So the date on that, the 21st. What is the pleasure of the board?
I guess, from what I understand, Daniel could probably give us more specifics on it, but I guess he came in and made them aware that it was December, September 21st, and he was going to look for an extension. Something about the engineer or the designer still hasn't come up with details or specifics, so he was asking for an extension. I asked Daniel if he was looking for a 30-day or 45-day, whatever, and there wasn't anything specific, so I guess it'd be up to the board what we would like to give him.
Daniel, are you on?
Yes.
He did ask for an extension, correct?
Yeah, he said he would be there tonight, so I don't know if you want to circle back around to this and give him a few more minutes.
Okay, yeah, we can come back. We can table it for now and come back to it. All right, thank you. The only other thing we have going on is discussions. This is sort of a broad category. We were talking about looking at things the planning board can do and probably should be doing in terms of properties in town, maybe looking at our zoning maps to see if, you know, any changes need to be made or some tweaking. Most of those designations were done in the 70s. Things have changed, or maybe nothing's changed, but we should probably take a look at them. Specifically, we were talking about the corner at 58106, the old Cumberland property, and see what kinds of things we might be able to do to help, maybe remove the blight, if I can be that bold here. One of the things I was going to bring up, it's kind of confusing as to ownership there. There's a million Cumberland Farms entities, and it's hard to tell who's who without actually getting to somebody. I was going to ask the board if we had a consensus for somebody or myself to reach out to the owners and see what their situation is there, see what kind of activity's been on the property, if they've had any interested buyers, and if there's any feedback as to, you know, anything the town might be able to look into that might help us put something on that corner, or maybe just get rid of what's on the corner, which would be, you know, a plus. So just throwing it out, see if anybody had any comments. One of the issues I thought in the past might be where the zoning line is may be a little detrimental to a business on that corner, but in Halifax, you can go 50 feet into the more restrictive zone, but we don't actually have an accurate map of where that zone is. We have a pretty good idea, but we have no measurements. Do you have any?
I've got plot plans from years ago.
That would be super helpful if you could...
Our original plot plan, and even one of the Kings here, we bought the property. Because the land next to us is residential.
Right.
And then, if you recall, when Sedels was there, there was a telephone pole, and I think that was sort of the line, and then they were into the residential area with her apartment.
Yeah, they actually spilled over.
Right, right, that was my understanding. And there was some, I still have some paperwork from years and years ago about that. I'll dig that up.
That would be...
But I do have the planning, I do have the...
That would be hugely helpful, because that would have some measurements on it.
Just for the record, could you state your name?
I'm sorry, Keith, I'm stupid.
My bad, I apologize. What are your thoughts on that, Keith? Do you have any?
Well, you know, I mean, I like the way things are now as far as our property, because it's a residential, plus we have an indoor business, everything's going well. We really charge us to keep it up, we're finally getting through the fire, almost done with that renovation.
Yeah, that was...
Yeah, that was us. But anyway, yeah, it's a blight, I mean, we know that. We've been there for 40 years now, and if I recall, it's been 25 years or so.
Has to be, has to be over 20 years.
And I've just been there paying property taxes all those years on that property. I mean, it's amazing.
There was one point, they weren't back, probably 15 years ago that I saw on the registry of deeds.
There's always been a huge mess with the family. That property kept changing hands, all their properties were changing hands and over and over again. I don't even know which entity of Cumberland Farms currently owns it. It's just on the property record cards, it just says Cumberland Farms Realty Trust, is that what it said? So whoever that is. But my thought process at least was to reach out and see if they have any particular problems that, and I have no vested interest in this property, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, other than to get something on that property that makes some sense.
Mother deed, too?
The one...
I recall there was a mold mitigation done, maybe 15 years ago that I had them do when I was the building inspector, and I know that Rock Pitcher really had them do an extensive one and remove the insulation and board it up for security, but that was probably eight or nine years ago now.
Do you know, have the policemen, I've never even walked back there for years, but I mean, I do hear sometimes kids or whatnot, but I mean, are the police monitoring that at all? Is there any entrance into the building at all?
I honestly don't know.
Because one of my concerns, I was thinking about it today, was, you know, it's got the big X on it, which is a vacant building, correct?
That's just basically what that's doing is alerting, right, alerting...
There's no, there's no...
Yeah, and do not enter, basically.
But, you know, for example, if there was a situation there, a fire or something, and that is designated like that, I mean, what if there's kids in there? You know what I mean? That's concerned me, you know?
Well, the other thought I had too was to, and I know currently we have an interim building inspector, but he's a pretty good guy, and he's pretty knowledgeable. I thought maybe we could reach out to the building inspector to take a look at it too, and Board of Health, because, you know, they have an overlapping jurisdiction on those kinds of properties.
Especially if there's mold and asbestos and that type of thing.
I was reading today, or what it's worth, the Massachusetts laws on that, and they say a building can be condemned by the Board of Health for a building that does have potential for vandalism, and even vandalism, and, you know, several criteria like that, it doesn't necessarily have to be because of mold or some other condition.
The Board of Health has more authority than any other state. They can do more than anybody. But that was the other part of it, was to reach out to our agencies to see if maybe they can at least look at it and/or maybe put some pressure on the owners to do something with it. I know the Selectmen have been talking about it. You know, I don't think we're in any position to buy it as a town. I mean, they're looking for 2.1 million.
No, they're not.
I don't know how that raises up.
Yeah, they're expired off the market. They have a sign up, but they're not on MLS. I researched it today, it isn't on any of the commercial websites, and their last list price was 749 in the year 2021, November of 2021, so...
But the most recent MLS listing was 2.1.
No, 749.
Yeah, and the last, I was told to them, they came down on that, was 600,000 for the 44.
Yeah, they didn't have it listed on MLS though, so they would probably sell it for a lot less.
I don't know how motivated they are to sell it. That's what I think is the big problem. I don't know if it's a major tax...
I think that shows that they're motivated, and they probably haven't received an offer that they would accept.
Yeah, it's kind of a tricky, tricky lot, the way it lays out. It depends on whose business, what business. I mean, it's usable. I mean, people have been paying 500, 600,000 for the land in town.
But I understand too that Cumberland Farms has several huge conditions slash restrictions. They can't, no business, they don't need anything specific, but of course they want to try and protect it from their competition, they don't want any convenience store items to be sold, they don't want a gas station on it.
Did they tell them to sell Cumberland Farms?
Yes, I was saying, yeah.
That's another question, right?
Well, they did start New England Farms though, so you know that one in Carver, that's the convenience store slash gas station.
Like, came to 44, that one?
Yep, that's them. But here's the thing, and I think you did the same thing, correct? That there is no recorded deed restrictions?
No, no, they wouldn't put those in until they sold them. If they were concerned about it, they would put those restrictions in as they're selling, at the point of sale, yeah, exactly.
So then somebody savvy would just be like, I'm going to do this, and that, so maybe that's what the problem is, is they don't want to sell to a gas station and therefore won't.
To Jamie's point, they did sell the company, however, we don't know what the agreements were with the new company.
Yeah, did they assume all the same?
Yeah, they could have had an arrangement where they said, you know, any property you own within proximity of the stores we're buying, you have to put restrictions. We have no idea, but that's why I was thinking we could at least reach out and see if we could find out anything. Anything would be helpful at this point.
Well, I think that we should go to the Board of Health and just write a letter to the Board of Health, but we got to be careful that we're not realtors. And we, like, so like, I get the whole thing, but we're, like, I am a Realtor, but on this board, we're not real, you are a Realtor. We're not, we're not real estate agents as a planning board.
No, and we're not looking to help them, you know, to list it or anything like that. We're just looking to see what kind of problems they're having, what, is there anything that the town can do? I don't know what the town could do, but...
Joe's on, let's hear what Joe's got to say, if anything, on this. Joe Braga?
Hey, boy.
Hi, sir, how are you?
Wow, I said something good about you, and I didn't even know you were on.
I hope you call on me. There are avenues, and it doesn't have to be just, from everything that I can find out, there's never been a unsafe structure by a building official tagged on that building. That X is by the fire department, and all that is, is to tell the firefighters, if it catches fire, don't go in. That's the X for it. As far as what, help can do so much, but the building official can do more, because I have total jurisdiction over tagging that building as unsafe and putting pressure on Cumberland Farms in Westboro through violation matters, and then see how they react. First thing, I had this discussion today, well, first thing I would need to do is get, be able to get into that building, get access, go in, take photos, et cetera, and then I would be able to deem it as unsafe, and then we could go from there. And that's, that's if you want to go to that place for that, what you were saying, Tom, about putting some pressure on. That's how you put the pressure on when a building is sitting there, it's not located like that, in such disrepair, I mean, disrepair, and it's a nuisance, and it's a life safety issue, you start getting homeless people finding their way in there. This happens in a lot of communities.
Nuisance is the operative word there, yeah.
What's that?
I said nuisance is the operative word there.
That's it, and it's a life safety issue also. So if public starts getting in there or getting around it, and then they get hurt on it, or on the property, that becomes a major issue. So there is an avenue to take, to start taking action against Cumberland Farms on that property, to see what they're going to do.
Well, rather than the board reaching out to them, is that something you could take up?
Absolutely. I just need to be able to get into the building, that's what I need to work on.
That would be the best way to handle this.
I have to get in there first, and then I have all legal tools that I need to pursue Cumberland Farms on unsafe structure and violation matters. I have to get in there first, and then I can start doing that against Cumberland Farms. So that's how I can help the town to start pushing them to see what they're going to do.
I think that's a great idea. I think, we're not looking for a vote, but a consensus of, you know, having the building inspector to see what he can find out and get, you know, let us, you know, just keep us informed and let us know what's going on.
Or at least find out the process and what else has to be done beyond the next step if deed is deemed unsafe.
Yeah, my, my guess is that it's back to being a mold factory in there, it's got to be. That roof was leaking 15 years ago. I know they did a patch about eight, nine years ago. Yeah, they did some roof work, but my guess is it's still leaking and it's still a mess in there. Not to mention, even rodents, I've got to believe, but that's just a goodness.
Another problem that I found out too, that no one seems to know what the tanks are, the underground tanks. That was another issue that was brought up to me.
I think they've been removed, if I recall, they, you know, by state law, when they moved across the street.
When they took the gas station, you know?
Yeah, when it went across the street to where the Cumberland's is now, the old ones had to come out. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure. I think there's something in kind of state regulation too, if it's vacant and not being used, it's either over a year or two years, Joe, it might be something like that, that if it's, if they're empty for that long, they have to be removed from the ground. And it's got to be, yikes, like, is it probably 25 years? It's got to be pretty close.
It's over that, because I've been here 26, and it was there when I came out of town, so it's just the way it is now.
It's hard to believe it's been that long.
So Walmart went in in 97? Walmart went in in 97, when did, Sedels was the last thing to stay alive in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, the bakery was there for, Drew's Bakery, I think it was. And then when Stop and Shop came in, they actually bought the business from Sedels, they bought the prescription business.
So that would have been 0506. So that would be...
Still remember the whole good day smell.
Cullens wouldn't negotiate on the lease agreement, so he had to leave.
Sorry, I lost my connection, so I lost some communication with you for a few minutes. I won't take much, much of your time, but I did want to make that suggestion to the board, that I'm more than happy to look into that, and I'll start working on that next week, to get access and take pictures and do my report. I'll keep you updated on what steps I'll be taking.
I think that's great.
Were you talking illegal about that today, or who were you talking about that with?
That's your time, well, Ed, because I wanted to know if he had, it was brought to my attention, the property and the agenda, so it was on tonight. I contacted Ed, said, Ed, was there ever any formal written unsafe structure? And he said, no, there's nothing in the files, and I couldn't find anything. So that's why I'm bringing it, I wanted to bring it up to you that I would start that process. That's the legal process.
Was a mold test or an asbestos test done, actually, what, 10, 11 years ago? 12?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, around that timeframe. I know that they did a mitigation in there, I don't know to what extent it was, I wasn't involved in it, but...
Is that in the file, do you know?
Maybe, you could look.
Joe, maybe you could let us know if there's any mold mitigation in the file when you get back to us.
Well, when I start researching it next week, I got to find out who can let me in, and that's the thing, I got to find out how to get in, how to get access, right advantage legally into that building, that's the thing I need to do first.
You might want to have them give you a hazmat suit, just saying.
Yeah, I'll go and wear like the blue poncho I wore in Niagara Falls over the last week.
I was going to say, you probably wouldn't have to go very far in.
Appreciate that, I think. Yeah, so I just thank you for your time, I just wanted to...
No, thank you.
I'll be more than happy to try and help the board and the town with that.
Well, that's a great first step.
Yeah, that's perfect. Much better to have him step up and get involved in this than us.
Yeah, he's the authority.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And then the mayor, we got to go to the Board of Health, and at least we'll get the ball rolling.
Yeah, you actually, you might want to search the Board of Health records for any mold mitigation, they might have been involved in that.
Great idea.
I missed having to touch with Bob a little bit, so if we do something, I would, I would invite Bob into it, so that it's a combined effort.
Yeah, put it all in one shot, that would make sense.
That sounds great. I'm going to assume that we have a consensus on the board without taking any kind of vote.
I don't even think we really need...
As a board, if they do condemn it, then what's our role in it? Not much.
Not much, okay.
Yeah, I think where he's doing it, I don't even think that we need to do anything, and I think we shouldn't.
That's what it sounds like, he can take care of it.
I was only looking at this from the point of view of planning. Trying to actually do some planning.
Right, so to that point of planning, so if they do, what's our role later down?
Nothing.
Not really, you know...
What's it zoned for?
It's zoned business, but it does have a residential line running through part of it, and that's where I was talking about.
The 50 feet of the building.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, you know, I don't know how...
What was it, the business section, I think was, what, 1.8 acres, and then there was another acre that was residential? It's how it breaks down. So actually, for a business purpose, it could be a great...
I believe the whole lot's going for 8 acres.
I thought that too, until it was pointed out.
Where's the deed, right? I'll read it.
There's no, there's no...
Did you have the deed? There's a deed floating around there.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I gave that. It's not D mark, the only on the line in here is the zoning line.
That's what I thought, this was the acre, and that was the 1.8, that's what I thought.
I think that's Keith's property.
But it says on the thing, house and barn to be taken down now.
Those were taken, those were taken down years ago.
Has to be, yeah.
But that wasn't on your file?
No, no. I think our maps show the line.
Yours is a lot too, right? Could you take a look at this? I'm pretty confident this is yours, because this...
This is ours right here.
Yeah, because that's Keith's.
And this is house, barn.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're close to the line, and then, let's see, Edmonton Saving? Okay, oh yeah, we've, I think we've got some delineation on this right here.
1.2 acres, more or less.
1.2?
I'll get my maps and bring them up to you guys.
No, that's not yours, right?
Yep, should be, right?
So that's across the line? That's the property?
Zone line, I meant, business, no, that's the...
I think that was a former.
You know, maybe you're right, this is us here, house and, where is this?
Yeah, because it's...
Or the house and barn could be, well, it says it was going to be rented, right?
Oh, okay, right.
Yeah, yeah, that's a...
This was their former, we're here.
Yes, right, exactly.
Right over here, and now I know where you're talking about, this zigzag right here.
Yeah, yeah.
You're right.
Because that was Keith's when they were there.
Right.
And then there's Paradise.
Right, we bought that other land next to us too, so, okay, yeah, I'll bring my map in a little more...
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Tom, can you? Yeah, sure.
I mean, honestly, like, on Carver Street, they used the 50%.
50/13, though.
Yeah, that's what I meant, the residential business thing, it worked out over there, I think.
Cumberland Farms used it on the other side of the street, they're 50 feet into the residential zone.
Right.
They actually took the hunk of building off from the original structure because they were encroaching into the residential area, and I remember at the time, I told them they can't do that, so they cut it back, but they used 50 feet of the residential property because they could.
What year was that?
What did you say, 1997, 98, 2008? What'd you say, 97, 98, something?
97, I think, is when Walmart...
Yeah, Walmart.
I didn't know about the Commies year. Hold on, so back when it was, remember when it was Cumberland, we're talking new Cumberland Farms side now, when it was Cumberland Farms and there was the music store and there was Tums and Tans? Was that, that building was torn down, and this one's newer than that?
Not the whole building, part of the building was torn down, and the rest of it was rented. That's when the roof got picked up in the storm, I don't know if anybody remembers that. The whole roof came off, and then they actually lowered the whole building.
Because John the Bobber was actually around the corner.
He was on the corner, yeah.
Yeah.
So the building was up prior to when the Cumberland Farms moved over?
They did the renting, and I guess they...
And put the gas pumps in.
Wasn't just Cumberland's for a while without gas pumps?
No, I think they did that all at once, when they moved John.
Remember the disc gas? That was Cumberland Farms, all the...
I know.
You weren't driving back.
A lot of the stations...
Riding my bike.
A lot of the stations were golf stations, but, anyway, I think we pretty much covered that part of it for our involvement, unless somebody else has anything else to add.
I don't know where I got 1.8 from, I...
Well, it's on, it's on the map, 1.8, but I'm pretty...
Oh, but the, well, maybe that's what it was, 1.2 plus something.
Well, so that was not...
Might be the land going towards the old Edmonton Saving.
That deed may be of two parts. I don't know, it's confusing.
It is confusing. But it sure looks like, I think the technical word is looks like hell.
So, see that?
It's pretty close.
This is 277 Plymouth Street, expired at 7:49 on November 8th, 2021.
Be nice to get that corner cleaned up. But what that sounds like, I couldn't agree with Joe more, it sounds like at least the place to start.
No, 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 it's perfect, the fact that he's willing to jump in there and then take a lead is perfect.
So it does say 1.8 on the listing, not that makes it right.
But that's what's on the map, that's one.
Right, so there might be part of the deed, or part of these, because this is Exhibit A, and that might be only talking about one of the lots.
It may have been another fossil involved.
Which then is there a title issue?
It's not big.
No, it surely not, and that's kind of been a hangup, I think, with someone purchasing that.
And it's configured kind of strangely too.
Because a square foot of the building that would go onto the business portion would have to be somewhat small to accommodate a apartment.
Remember the guy that lived there, in the house, was the old gray house?
Our house, you mean?
Yeah. It was the house that was on, that was torn down.
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think this was the manager of the old Cumberland Farms. I couldn't remember, I can see...
Oh, we were wondering whose name, what his name was.
It's 100 years ago.
What if there's a title problem that's keeping it?
Well, that's kinds of things we could...
Because if you think about it, if they're selling 1.8, and then the deed has 1.2, because it doesn't refer to any other exhibit, is there a title issue? That could be it.
All questions being...
Well, I'm just putting it out there that, where I just found that, maybe that's something that, I mean, there could be something missing too, but either hand.
Well, we got two different things kind of going on here, but what they can do with it, try to do with it, and the condition of building, but I think having the building inspector take the lead here is the way to go.
Yeah, the rest, the rest should fall into place with, you know, if it's, the restrictions are transferable from when they sold, like you said, from when they sold the property to the new owners, if, you know, that's all.
They may even reach out to see what they can do with the property, to see what kind of feedback they get.
Right, good.
Not that I'm trying to rush this along, but anyone else have a little comment? Anybody else have anything else? Anybody in the audience? So I think we're good for now, we'll just wait for something to come back from the building inspector, and then if there's anything that we're going to discuss, we'll post it, but we can certainly keep people in the loop anyway.
I'll check my old maps and papers, I did some paperwork too, because there was some conflict with the Kings and Cumberland's, or that residential lot, or septics and tanks and...
There was a period of time...
I still got letters from Mary King on that, so I'll have to look at all those.
They also tried to rezone that at one point, that failed.
Oh, yeah, I was, were you telling me that night?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was pretty heated.
That was a two-thirds vote, I missed by two votes.
Yeah.
Was it really? Wow.
And then, then we went to the planning board, and, you know, we changed the bylaw so I could operate the veterinary business in a residential zone with a special permit.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, or Nate, everybody came out for that.
Oh, yeah, it was almost as heated as the Walmart.
Oh, it was good, yeah.
Those were interesting back in 93.
Two-thirds tough.
When you, were you trying to rezone your land as a residential business?
Well, at the time, you could not have a veterinary office in residential zone area, so it was only the business zone, so, yeah, we, had we bought the property from Kings or were we in the process? I figured that out. I think we were in the process, and went to town meeting, and it was close, but some of the neighbors in Paradise... But some of the neighbors in Paradiseland area were...
That's where it...
All in arms and, "We're going to fuck a burger, King," or something like that. But, you know, that's just the way it goes. It all worked out for us. It's been, actually, it's been quite good, so we're fine the way things are. And obviously, you know, if something's going to go on that corner, we would love to have it aesthetically pleasing and something we could work with. And I'd love to keep the residential area between us and the trees and stuff to keep it border.
Yeah.
So many years, God, it's had it been 25 years, at least.
I mean, when you talk about blight.
Yeah, they sprayed, they sprayed, painted it with...
Yeah, yeah.
I think Sedals moved out like 20 years ago and went into, and, because that's when Stock and Shop went in, 2005.
Right. So it's a mess.
Stock and Shop was actually operating the pharmacy for a while.
Oh, were they?
Before the store opened. Because they had bought it prior to...
Yeah.
Great.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Keith, appreciate it.
Love to see those documents, though. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, there's some old letters back and forth that I, because Mary King said to me, "Make sure you keep this." I don't know what the problem was. I'll look into it.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Okay, take care. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right, we're going to circle back to 539 Plymouth Street, site plan review.
Yeah, I need an extension.
Okay. Yep.
I called him today, he's like...
Yeah, she told us.
Oh, sorry, yes.
That's okay. We're just going to pick some time and...
What do you think, 30 days, 55 days, what do you...
60 days?
60 days.
Tom, you should identify yourself first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I keep forgetting to do that, thank you.
You just identified yourself?
Yeah, so I'm around 539 Plymouth Street, trying to get an extension.
Thank you.
I think 20 days will be enough, because he says he's going to have ready, you know, on the...
I gave him to the last meeting of...
Yeah. It's the second year.
Well, depending on our meeting...
On the first meeting in...
Yeah, depending on, I'd call 45 just to get, except one more meeting in there.
Yes, please.
Better be safe, sorry.
Yeah, just today, right.
First Thursday.
It's a time, yeah.
Yes.
39 days.
Just pick a date, it's easier.
Yeah, I did, the whole meeting the other day, he told us, I have for you guys, so we can figure it out with Border Health. He's like, "Yeah, because I have to bring to you guys now," so he got to go to Border Health.
I can do that.
Yeah, that's easier.
How you guys want, just, you want him to go to Border Health first.
So it'll be 39 days on the first November meeting.
Yes, yes.
But it'll be after that, so 39 days is November 6. Oh, wait a minute, and it's from the 21st, so actually, right, so the 21st is three more days, so, yeah, it'll be 36 days. Yeah, so 45 days is probably what you should do to have the first meeting in November.
Okay.
And if you're ready before that...
I can have the one in October 2nd, correct?
You can if you're ready.
Yes, okay.
So you would have October 2nd, October 16th, or November 6th included, included in a 45-day extension, just in case you needed a different day.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you, that would be best.
So then, your expiration, you'd want to let us know by the beginning of November if you weren't going to be able to see us, to ask for another extension if that's what you wanted to do.
Yes, what's the beginning of November meeting day?
November 6th.
Okay, good.
But if you want to come in in October, you're going to get to her a couple of days, two or three days before that meetings, because we have to be posted.
Yes, what I'm going to do is, as soon as he gives to me, I can give to Danielle, we'll put online.
Yeah, and she can tell you when we...
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion then to extend a 45-day extension to the African on PSP5 PR 25-3 for the property at 539 Plymouth Street for the site plan review, which would expire on November 6, 2025.
No, sorry, it would expire on November 15.
Oh, 15?
Yeah.
November 15, 2025. And of course, as it was explained, if you are ready beforehand, you can certainly get on an earlier agenda.
Another question I have for you guys, it's like, right now...
Oh, wait a minute, there's a motion on the floor?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on the floor?
See, you should have said.
I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor, I'll second, okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to extend PSPR 25-3 to November 15, 2025. We need a roll call vote. I'll start with Bruce.
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Myself, Tom, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
And I'll make him a copy.
Right now, my concern is like, because he's have to apply for Border Health, because how I work with this, it was like from front to the back. Can I bring, if he's already for the August 2nd, can I bring to you guys? So if I bring that, then it's going to be, you guys prove to Border Health, take a look at it, how is it?
So I think that's going to be a discussion. I think we should, in this condition, make sure that the Board of Health has signed off.
Border Health sign off first?
Before they come to us.
Yeah, I mean, that just makes sense, because then if we have to move anything, you've already got yourself situated. Where were you at with Border Health? I kind of lost track of that.
To Border Health, I bring her there, I bring, I bring her there, but they, they, what they have to do is, I'm sorry.
Don't worry. All right, I'll get you a copy.
No, with Border Health, pretty much, he needs to apply, like the engineer is applying for Border Health. He's applying for the 50 feet, or like, he's already have everything marked over there.
And he might have conservation and everything involved in that too?
50 feet of what?
That's why I was thinking conservation.
Not Border Health.
Conservation.
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 That makes more sense.
Sorry, sorry, Border Health's okay. I already talked to Border Health. The guy said to me, the Border Power, if I have the company clean, he'll be fine with it.
So you're going in front of conservation?
Yeah, he's, like, not me, because the engineer...
Yeah, he owns it, yeah, right.
Yeah, the engineer.
Have you determined a position with a shed or office building or the building is going to be located?
I'm not going to be building this, it's going to be a shed, 300 square feet.
That's what I meant, have you got a location already?
Yeah, it's in the plane, it's the same as before on the plane.
Okay. I thought we moved, that's why I'm asking.
No, 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 I'm not going to move, because if I move, I have to go all the way back.
Are you going to talk to the historical people about putting it there?
If I have to, yes.
If anything was at 300 feet, you're going to have to talk to historical.
300, that's, I think that's less than 300, what it was there, or this is, this is not, this is not, this is me or no, over there?
The historic...
It's wrong, whatever it is.
Historic goes from Primary Drive all the way to...
So it's, it's wrong, because Mon Ponset Street doesn't abut your property.
Kitchen.
But that's what we got, right?
He sent this today?
I, I, I can't tell what it is, honestly.
Well, so it says 590, but then Mon Ponset Street's right here.
It should be Plymouth Street, he cut and pasted on it now.
And it's not right.
It's not right, yeah.
Oh, he's sending this over there?
We're trying the plans first, Sam. I don't know what those are, but there's no plans for 539 yet.
You mean, 590?
Well, for 590, the last time you guys saw them, I think, Tom, it was just in your binder.
Yes.
Yeah, this is 539.
Yeah, well, we're discussing, I don't know, can you see us? Danielle?
I can see you, I just mapped it out.
So this, this map we were referring to says 590 on it, so we're not saying, I'm just saying that's what we were discussing. But it doesn't look, it's not...
I don't think that's my plan.
It's not.
No.
But it does, it's not you, we're just trying to figure out what it is. But it says 590.
I kind of have my email, he sent it to me the other day, but to me to look at it.
Yeah.
It's almost the same I have first here with you guys, but he just changed, he just put management, everything the right way on it.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Those type of things, I have in a structure. But my concern is like, I don't have the new one from him yet, because I'm not going to ever print that one. My concern is, if I can bring to you guys, it's like you guys say, okay, we proved this, but to Border Health, to not Border Health.
Conservation.
Conservation, dependent on conservation, you see what I'm saying?
You have the same opinion that we're waiting.
I don't know if he'd be ready.
Yeah, he's, I think what he's trying to say is, if we can make a contingent on him...
Yes, contingent, like, because, yes.
No, conservation.
No, conservation, yeah, I'm going to Border Health.
Yes.
I say go.
So, is it of the same opinion with the, as we just stated with the Board of Health?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on, if somebody wants to make a motion to take a contingent on clearing conservation, but...
We can't guarantee that.
No, we can't, but he's going to have to do that to, you know...
I think she'd get the approval from conservation.
Yeah, only, yeah, because this is kind of funky, because we're not going to, you know...
And historical, right?
Yeah, and historical, if he's going to be within the 300 feet. And we're talking about a shed, we're not talking about...
The build, this one, because if I have to move the shed, I'll go...
Well, you know, you...
I'm like, I almost want it to get proved. If I, like, if I'm going to have to go to, let's say I have to go to historic and they're going to hold me another year, what I'm going to do is, I'll put the shed all the way on the back.
You know what you need to do with them, and I'm just giving you a suggestion. Take pictures of what you're going to put in there, the shed.
Yeah.
That's all they want to do, they want to see what it's going to look like.
Oh, yeah, whatever they want me to put it in, like, they say, "Oh, when you put an old local shed in there, I'll put an old local shed in there with old shingles."
That's what I'm telling you, you need to talk to them. All they want to do is make sure it doesn't, isn't some ugly thing that they don't like.
Yeah.
On the updated plan.
Yeah, on the updated plan, well, you're going to have to plot it on the plan, but they're going to want to see, they're going to want to see renditions. So they're going to want to see what it's going to look like. Even if it's pictures of a shed someplace, if it's going to be the same shed, don't take pictures of something you're not going to put on.
Yes.
But, you know, either that or drawings, I think pictures are better. If you're buying a shed, I assume you're going to build one.
Yeah, I probably build one, you know?
Okay, well, then you need to draw some drawings and what it's going to look like. Because that's what they're going to want to see, what this shed's going to look like.
But I should go to them before I come back to you guys.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Because if they say no because it's in the historic, then we have...
Danielle, do you have the contact information for historical, other than John's Barber Shop?
So if you brought in your plans to Danielle, she could send them over to Historical? Does that make sense?
Nobody from Historical ever responds. It's very hard to get in touch with them.
Okay, this is my thing, because I already tried. Nobody's get back to me. This is why I want to, because I don't want to get too...
I have an idea. Danielle, if you get the plan in from 590 with everything for Historical, let somebody on this board know and we'll make sure Historical looks at it.
Somebody brings it to one of them.
Makes sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Why can't bring to one of them, too, if you guys tell me which one I have?
It needs to go through the Building Department.
The Building Department?
Yeah, it needs to go through the Planning and Building Department.
You could do it, but you're not going to, you're not going to find anybody. We can, we can get it to them.
It's hard, honestly, so.
Even if it means I have to get a haircut. That's a job.
And a shampoo.
And a shampoo, yeah. I could use a shed.
Maybe hot lights.
Do they do those now?
I'm going to talk to that guy tomorrow, who's kind of making the plan for it.
Yep.
I'm going to tell him to put that shed in there.
Yeah, yeah, you got to plot it.
It's already there, but I'm going to tell him to keep, make sure he put all the measurements in there, and how it's going to look. So I can bring that to Danielle, I can try to go to see John, or like, bring it there.
Yeah, if you want to go see John, John's okay with it, you know, he always says, I'm at the Barber Shop all the time. Well, starting Wednesday, Wednesday through Saturday, not Monday or Tuesday.
I might ask them for their thing, and so I'm going to, because he's supposed to, I kind of told him this video is going to be in the 23. I kind of have in my head, wrong. And he's like, "Oh, I'll be ready for the 23," but I'll be asking him soon as the beginning of the month, you know what I mean? He's like, "Oh, I'll be ready, I'll be ready."
Get what you can and come in when you've got something.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll give you a copy.
You'll get it done. Hope you'll get it.
Thank you.
Just wait for Amy to come back and...
Are we doing minutes?
Yeah, we've got minutes and we have the plan for 350A that we approved.
Oh, we have to sign?
We need to sign, yeah. Tom, I don't think we ever finished that, we had a motion a second, but we never... No, we never took the vote.
I thought we did.
Oh, no, we did.
We did?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Did we?
I'm pretty sure.
I forgot, no.
Yeah, it's, you know...
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, it's, it's not that.
Do we have a mile left, man?
Uh, no.
You don't have to?
Doesn't need to be recorded.
No?
I just got the letter of approval, that's all I need.
Here's a copy. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good night, guys.
Take it easy. Do we need to just do this?
Danielle, I'm putting the extension in the meeting minutes folder.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Speaking of meeting minutes, we put off signing them last time. Does anybody have any issues with any minutes that were...
I personally do not have any removal.
We can start with August 7, 2025, if I can get a motion approved. Actually, I thought a motion would prove both of them, where we're taking a roll call, so... Actually, I thought the motion approved both of them where we're taking a roll call. But I wasn't here on August 7. Okay, and that can split them. Yeah, we're gonna split them.
Sorry, guys.
That's all right. It's all good.
Glad you were not. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of August 7, 2025 and August 21, 2025 as presented. Or do you want them separately?
Separately, yeah.
Just...
August 7.
August 7, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to approve the meeting minutes of August 7, 2025. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
He's not.
Oh, you're not voting. We're gonna get this together.
Oh, I see why we're not doing them together now. Okay.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Myself, Tom Elias, yes. Amy Truett?
Yes.
All right, for those present and voting, it's unanimous.
I'll make a motion then to accept the minutes of August 21, 2025 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of August 21, 2025. Again, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Sylvester? Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Myself, Tom Elias, yes. Ms. Truett?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous.
It's the left side or the right side? Are we doing the right side? Yeah. Am I going first?
What are you signing?
This is for industrial drive. Unless you want to open it for that before we sign this, whatever you want.
I want to talk about it first.
Oh, okay.
Before this?
Yeah, just a quick second. Not that we're not gonna find it.
Yeah, we've already approved it. We just didn't have it to sign. But if you want to discuss something, go ahead.
Oh, sure, sure. Right now? Okay. I just was wondering if we had a decision letter to look at.
Did we not sign a decision letter? I think it was just the plan we didn't have, right?
No, we needed a decision letter to be written and remember, we gave all the stipulations.
We had a list of stipulations. Do we have that, Danielle?
I don't think you have a copy there. It's already gone down to the part office, so...
Did we sign it?
It has a signature on it, yeah.
Okay.
What signature? It needs the board's signature. On a decision letter, there needs to be a quorum of people on it. Right?
Well, unless we have a vote on record that the chairman can sign for the board on...
But we talked about the fact that the letter was gonna come in front of us to be looked at.
I don't recall. I'm not saying it didn't happen.
No, I understand. Conservation Board of Health. You didn't get it.
Yes, yes, I got it. I was thinking. It takes me longer to think now than it used to. I don't think well. We can sign the plan and hold it.
Yeah, that's fine, but he's gonna need to record the decision letter and it does need to have a... It needs to have the plan. It's not one signature for it to be legal.
I don't recall if we ever voted to allow the chair to sign for the board on an approval plan. I don't recall.
We didn't, but to go to the registry of deeds, it needs at least a quorum.
He doesn't need to go to the registry of deeds because site plans don't need to be recorded.
But the decision letter does.
Not even the decision letter?
Nope.
It still needs to be...
Yeah, well, we can, you know, because if everybody's in the building...
Can you send that to our next meeting, please, Danielle? Or something? Because we need to review those things before they go out. Danielle?
Yeah, we should probably take a look at it to verify that the stipulations were on...
So can we have that on our next agenda to have the decision letter be brought in? Because we need to make sure that everything that was stated...
Yeah, that's easy enough to do. I mean, we can either sign the plan tonight and hold it, or we can hold the plan and sign it at the next meeting as well.
I would prefer to do it both at the same time.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I think that's it.
Maybe I'm missing something. If it doesn't have to be, the site plan doesn't have to be recorded and the decision later doesn't have to be recorded.
Well, actually, I think the decision letter has to be recorded. I don't think the plan does, but I'm gonna look into that.
And it still has to be signed by all of us and approved by all of us. Or...
Yeah, yeah, even...
Most of us, to make sure that everything that is in it and on it and it's approved by the planning board. Kind of like our minutes come to us for...
No, I know what you're saying.
I mean, I wrote everything that you handed on that paper.
It's just process. It's just process.
We should look at it.
All right, what else do you have?
That's it for the agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.[1762.06]